Okay, I need a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept the UD City Council meeting minutes for Tuesday, March 12th, 2013.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Heidi, I need to go back to the next you have a conference interest.
I do not.
Okay. All right, this is on the agenda.
Sorry, I'm late.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Mike? Okay, so first is the Envoys Register. Does anybody have any questions on the Envoys Register? Give me my heart.
You're getting through the slide, aren't you?
Yeah. Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Envoys Register for February 1st, 2013 through February 20th, 2013.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, um... No, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, Roe called Dave?
Yes.
And Don, sustain? And I say yes. And Heidi, yes. Okay, the motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda is the Transaction Register. And you're gonna abstain from this one also, Don, right?
Yes.
Okay, there was one. Lately, it was taken off. Does anybody have any questions? I have a need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Transaction Register for February, or, yes, excuse me, February 13th, 2013 through March 14th, 2013.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And Roe called Dave?
Yes.
And Don, you're abstaining, and I say yes. Are you abstaining, Don?
Yes.
Okay. And...
Heidi, yes.
Okay, next is the Budget. Is there any questions? Let's see.
Let me just, let me make one quick comment. I did give you an update on the general fund revenues. We had some extra, I think, during the past out some extra pages. Just, we, I noticed when I gave you the original, that the property taxes that we received during the last station were included in that, so I got that updated, so they'll include it on that. Other than that, the expenditures, you know, just affected basically the general fund, that first page. Everything else, all expenditures, uh, this doesn't change anything there.
Okay. And what percentage of it was supposed to be?
It should be at 66 percent, two thirds through.
All right, so we're pretty, I was going through there tonight, today, and, um, we're almost, I think everybody's pretty close, there's a couple, but overall, they're...
Yeah.
So we're doing really good, so... Any questions? So for those in the audience, we don't approve budgets, it's just something we look at every time. And, uh, next on the agenda is the Transaction Reversal Report, which deals with court. And so, do you have any questions? There, does anybody have any questions? There's nothing on there.
No questions.
So we will just sit through. So we appreciate you coming tonight. And you may stay, or if you have anything I'm sorry? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, um, oh, it's good, you used to, or you do that?
I'll just do it.
Okay, UD City Council?
Yes, so Heidi's not here, so, uh... No.
Okay.
So, this month, we are doing the Easter egg hunt, and thank you to everyone who donated. We have several really generous donations, and we have actually exceeded our goal, which I think is good, because the paper helped advertise for us, and hopefully, hopefully we can manage more children that we might get. We are having it, the Easter egg hunt will be March 30th at 9:00 a.m. We were previously considering 10:00 a.m., like we did last year, but we've moved it to 9:00. And, uh, so the UD City Council is helping with that this month. And next month, we'll have a speaker. It hasn't been decided yet who the speaker will be. And, let's see, she already recorded on what we did for February, so that's really everything that's going on with UD City Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the building official report, yeah?
Put a building inspection report on your desks, three building inspections this month. Uh, skipping down toward the bottom, I have closed 11 permits, and I'd give a little break down there. Three of those were closed by those inspections that I did. Uh, three were on my list that were inspected by Ivy Co Group and were closed, and probably should have been off my list a long time ago. Two closed previously, but they weren't off of my list, so taking those off, and then just reviewing outstanding permits, there were three that should have been closed previously, and so I closed those. So making a little progress on backlog there. Uh, and then I did attend this last month, code training in St. George.
Have they changed anything?
Uh, yes, actually, the, uh, 2012 codes go into effect one July this year, and so one of the classes was on changes in the 2012 code. Uh, the codes are probably changing faster than they ever have, becoming much more energy efficient. Energy code is the big, where big changes are, but homes and buildings are gonna need to be, start being more and more energy efficient. So, yes, there are changes out there. Any questions?
Any questions, David?
Good job, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, next is the Sheriff's Report, and we will do that today. Oh, the Fire Department, sorry. Kirk is going to do it, of course.
Yay!
You're walking around good, and...
Unless I run into things. I keep doing that. Um, so, so far this year, um, we've had two fire alarms for, one for smoke and stove in January, six medical calls in, oh, excuse me, I'm going for my ex-nals here. Okay, so on January 2nd, we had a fire alarm, not two, but a fire alarm, smoke from a stove. And on January 6th, we had a medical call seizure at Four Square Church. On January 25th, we had a power line arcing determined to be caused by the ice, and turned over to the power company. And yesterday, March 18th, we had, came in as illegal burn. We were canceled by 64, they beat us there, and then turned out, they said it was a recreational burn. So that was so far year-to-date. And you gave me a list of everything last year, that I turn over to you. And, right now, the Fire Department is finishing up their firefighter one training.
This is the last week?
This is the last week. I think they're doing their testing today, Mike said. For the firefighter one. He's not there, because he's, already has his firefighter one, but he's going in firefighter two testing, which I believe is Thursday. And hoping there. And, I have called Dave Bickers and tried to get information on the new brush truck. He told me I had that paperwork filled out by him, he hasn't turned off, turned the paperwork over to me, he doesn't return my calls, so I've kinda hit a dead end with him. And I've even tried through South Leaver, hoping that they had a different state wild night guy, which unfortunately is the same guy for them, too. So I have one other alternative I'm gonna try. I have a cousin whose brother-in-law used to be a big home show in the state for the wild night fires, so I'm gonna try, see if he's still in there, we'll that round.
If, if you don't succeed there, it'll be...
Yeah, and we did, Mike did find some battery cables, so we did get the other truck fixed and running.
Where did you find this at, can I ask?
Bradshaw Auto Parts, or something like that.
Really?
Yes. So he did, he did find him, it is fixed, it is running.
It started and went.
Yep. So, as I'm going for April.
So, um, I did to ask Mike to type up the report and get it over here, time that we can print and put it in our books and everything, so if you just pass that one to him, we'll have that one.
Yeah, 'cause he sent this to me, and it must have been through his phone, because he said it was a Word app, but it won't work well with my Microsoft Word.
Oh.
So I've had, I've had problems trying to get it to print, so I did finally get one page print, but it won't look like the first page, because of how, the problem I've had trying to get it to print. And so I made him aware of that tonight.
All right, and if he, if he just wanted to send it to you, we'll send it to him.
Okay, I'll tell him. And, anything else?
Burn months, two lefts this year? Burn months?
Yes.
April, May, right here?
It starts May 30th and go, no, March 30th, and it goes to April 30th. But you have to, you have to actually get a burn permit off the one, you have to...
Doesn't it go to May 30? That goes to May 30.
May 30.
Oh, okay.
And then you have to, you actually have to go to DEQ to get your permit, and then it's sent to the city, but that's the only way you can get a burn permit.
It's also one month, hell, we have two.
Yes.
Excuse me on that, but that's what it turns out to be.
What you like?
I almost read it in April.
I understand.
Do we need pyros and nine of cheese? I'll give this to you.
Okay.
Anything else, then?
No, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
I'm glad it wasn't an illegal burn, but that was a false alarm.
Yeah, well, we've been there before for illegal burns, and he was told by the sheriff last year, if he burns illegal again, he will go to jail. Because all the neighbors came and converged at the scene and complained vocally. And so that was his ultimate, and so I guess it was in a recreational pit or something. I, we never got there, we were canceled en route, so we never got there to actually see...
I wonder what you meant by recreational, a pit, a fire pit?
A fire pit, that's what they call recreational.
Okay, that's good to know.
So, I have one good one there. Here is the date, the month, and then the day, just so you're aware. But it just did print out the little squares. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're skipping the Sheriff's Report, and he might be here at the end of the meeting, we'll see how that goes. Okay, discussion on the fire station, and we have Shane Saunders presenting for us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, turn it over to you.
Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the time. Uh, we spent, what, the last six, eight weeks, working with the Design Committee from the city, developing this design. Uh, we looked at six designs, and in the end, developed this one. This one, um, well, let me start with the site. One of the, one of the things in the process that we were asked to do was to do a boundary survey, 'cause it wasn't sure, this, this property has been there so long, and that building has been there so long, it wasn't clear where the property line was. And this is the site plan to the left here. The existing building, stop shaking. The east wall of the existing building is here. And it was assumed, I think, that that was the property line, but after we did, uh, did the property survey, we found that the property line is actually 21 feet east of that. Basically, is kind of the center line between your existing building and shed to the east. This, this gray building is a shed that is on the city property. In this scheme, um, there was a desire to have about 17 parking stalls for the entire volunteer fire department, for when they're doing training, and when there's a fire, they have a place to park. So, the Beltway actually ends, the edge of Beltway is here, so we're adding parking to the north. The easement for the railroad is north of this new parking, so we're still within, um, the city property by adding that parking. That gives you a number of parking there, and then we can get three to the west, and one here to the north. As we looked at it, we, we looked at kind of the pros and cons, and this scheme actually had the most pros and fewest cons. In fact, the only con, I think, was that the spaces are a little smaller than some of the other designs that we looked at. In this scheme, um, the existing building, like I said, is this gray area and the blue area. The blue area is being utilized by the, um, maintenance, public works. There's a, there's a partial wall here now. We will build a new wall that goes all the way up and isolates the two spaces. We're gonna tear out the existing office area and the storage area. This wasn't built as a fire station, I would think initially, and fire stations are required to be essential facilities. And such, essential facility is designed with, with more stringent, um, loads, lateral loads, so in an earthquake, they can withstand that, in essence, being the last building standing. And that interior office space and storage area don't meet codes, so I think, no matter what scheme we did, that had to come out. But this scheme, we're proposing to put two new overhead doors to the north, and that was one of the things we discussed, was the best way to get those apparatuses in and out of the site. And right now, there's the two doors on the west side, it's really tight for the big truck to get in and out of there. So we looked at a way to get into the site easier, and so by adding these two, two new doors to the north, it can get those trucks in there a lot easier and get out, in the case of a fire. We would keep the two doors on the west. It really gives you a lot of flexibility in that apparatus bay area. You could configure that in a number of ways with the four doors. You know, two, we've, we're gonna put a wider door here for the large truck, and you can put a truck here, you, you could put two trucks going west. There's a trailer that they're looking at using for, um, kind of cleanup after, they have a lot of equipment. We were able to fit that in. This scheme would also allow, you know, a fifth bay, if, in fact, you know, public works have removed, and the fire department needed to expand. We don't see that happening in the near future, but all you have to do is take that wall out, and you've got an additional bay, very minimal cost. So what we did is put all of the spaces to the east. So this, this yellow area is an addition to the east. Looking at this elevation at the far right, you can see this is the existing building with two new doors, and then this lower metal building, it would be a metal building also would be the addition. We have an entrance here, um, with the chief's office and dispatch, it would be a combined use right off the entrance. And then just next to that is the turnout gear space, so as firemen were coming in, that is just inside the door, they can get their gear on and get onto the large apparatus and out the door. So we try to keep those functions close together, so they could get in and out quickly. Um, we have, um, the self-contained breathing apparatus room here, just off the turnout gear, and then a tool storage room, that they can have tools that they would need in a, in an emergency. Uh, next to that is a training room, um, here, and then to the south, we have a toilet that is accessible from the apparatus bay, and a laundry room that is accessible from the apparatus bay. Next to that is a day room, uh, that would have a kitchen off that, would happen, there would be a fitness space, uh, for exercise equipment that they could use. And then we would have a bathroom, shower, and then two sleeping quarters. And then we added a bathroom, too, for maintenance, so they could lock this door to isolate maintenance from, from fire. I think one of the pros with this is we kind of centralized the plumbing to keep the cost down. All the plumbing is, is located in one area. And then we're utilizing the property to the east, which, um, really wasn't being used, I don't know if it could be used really for, for vehicle type of activities, so really utilizes, utilizes the property well, keeps that west area open for public works and for fire. The, uh, we're proposing to re-skin the building. We leave the structure in place, but put a new metal panel on the outside, uh, which gives you the red look, so it looks like a fire station. We found a number of roof leaks, so we put a new roof panel on. And then on the back, we've shown these long, kind of linear windows. Really, they're up high, they're long and linear, so, um, people can't look in, but you're gonna get a lot of natural light into the space, which we felt was important, so, uh, you know, if you've been in the existing fire station, it's pretty dark and dreary in there, and we wanted to get, get a lot of light into that space. So this top elevation, uh, here, is your west side of the building. That's the existing building with just a new skin. These two doors would be fire, the sand would be maintenance. So really, no changes to that, other than the skin. And then this is the addition on the east side here, with, with the windows. And then, as I mentioned, here on the right, this is the north elevation. So the high building is the existing metal building, and then the addition to the left, where your public entrance would be. And we put some parking around that building, a few parking stalls, and then the rest of the parking is across Beltway. These two spaces are second floor spaces that will be above, well, this, this is what we call a prop training. It will sit above the turnout gear and the tool room. It'll have an opening up high that they can train, they can put a ladder up, crawl up there. They'll, you know, extract dummies, and just for training.
Is that where the room is currently?
Yes, that's correct. And then this other room here is a compressor room, which will be above the bathroom and laundry room, which will have compressors for the self-contained breathing apparatuses, and then we'll have air, water, and power, um, out in the bay, so they can service the trucks, and those compressors will run that. Any questions?
I think one of the pros that we ought to mention here, that he mentioned, is this being, what did you call it, essential building?
Essential facility.
Essential facility, is the new addition will tie in with the old.
Yes, that's correct. I didn't mention that. This existing building, there's a structural frame about every 30 feet, so here, 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 and here, and then on the end, this thing's sensitive, I'm not shaking at that. There's a, there's a steel frame, and so with the addition, we're gonna, we're gonna align our new frame with that and tie into it, so we can stabilize that existing building and make it much more rigid, bringing it up to an essential facility code requirement. And this scheme really lent itself to that, because it, it runs the full length of the building, and we can align the new frames with it, um, to beef it up. So it minimizes the amount of effort that we have to put into the existing building to bring it up to code. Yeah. That's it.
Anything else, then? Heidi?
As far as what's been presented, no.
Don, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I would just want to do, uh, the primer at, uh, with the, uh, long panel, the, uh, the whole group that they applied here to make it, uh, so, and of course, what we're looking for is getting by that, so we can design, so we can carry out the design that we have, uh, the cut mark that has, uh, is there, but this design led us to, uh, possibly do, uh, some of the room with, we need to give the whole piece out with the five years, uh, with the, the, uh, that we could make, that would, uh, allow us to make this better, on having improvements with that value range.
Can you, can you, need these improvements in stages?
Incredibly?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Because he's saying, this will be, will be built on grant money that we get, and can we do it in stages? Is that what you're saying, Don?
Yes, I just, yeah, we put it, the, the lead itself, stage is so that we could make a progress with the five years, if you could get everybody's question.
Yeah, I think, uh, you could look at the sleeping quarter, day room area, that's something that could be left unfinished. I think I would, I would build the whole shell, so we can, we can, you know, upgrade the structural, um, as we mentioned. But that whole wing, or the day room, sleeping quarters, bathroom, that could be just unfinished space and done a later date.
And, and Mayor, I just want to be back, uh, back with the, with your, uh, with the, uh, locals there.
Yes.
Anything else? Pardon? That's all he has. Oh, okay.
Do you have an es, do you have an estimate of what a addition and remodel like this would cost?
We put some square footage costs to the last three schemes that we did, and that was one of the pros, this one, it was, it was one of the more affordable ones. Again, this is a square footage cost, we haven't got in to detail and looked at the equipment that the fire chief's gonna want, but we were around 320,000. Now, that's finished, that's...
The entire thing?
Dayroom, kitchens, that's everything. Yes.
And, and that's still, is something that you can work on, is the cost?
Yes, that would be refined, I mean, it could go up a little bit, but I think that's ballpark where it's gonna probably fall. Again, that, this scheme was one of the more cost-effective schemes, they weren't kind of up from that. So that was one of the things that they liked about this one also.
Anything else? Don?
No.
Okay, and Dave?
No.
We really appreciate you coming and presenting that to us.
Good.
Thank you.
We'll leave these with you.
Okay, thank you.
We had, as part of this also, we had soil support done, um, so we can see what the soil conditions are, so when we start the structural zoning, we have to do that on all projects, but I, you want to leave that with one of you.
Yeah. Then, um, we'll get to the other end and figure out what's the next step.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Uh, does this kind of end our... No. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion on the UD decision, and Heidi's gonna do this with, she's gonna introduce some questions.
So, um, we, as you can see on our agenda today, we have all of our, uh, departments report once a month, and so we thought it would be a good idea to have the UD Committee report, too, in the next few months, uh, up until UD comes. So today, we also wanted to focus on, we have what we're going to do with the political parties, and what they will be allowed to do, and just make sure that we have a clear understanding, and that everything will, everybody will be treated fairly, uh, with the parade and the booths and things like that. So, we'd like to invite Patty to come up and just report to us on what you've got planned for right now, and if there's anything else you'd like to report on, too, for where you're at.
Okay. Um, we just had this discussion in one of our meetings about whether to, you know, let rent the booths, and we want the political parties to be wel, feel welcome to be at the parade, pass out their flyers, and to have a booth rental that you're...
Okay, great.
Oh, you can put something on the application or something like that, so everybody knows, but...
I could, I've been revising it today.
Just so there's no...
Are there any exclusions on the booth rental application as it is?
I know we had one last year, and I can't remember what it was for, but...
The food?
No.
Oh, just the booth?
Just the booth. Yeah, well, we, um, we've been looking at it individually, to see if, uh, it's worth having a booth rental, or renting a booth to them, so...
Could you send me a copy of your application, please? Email?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not finished with it yet.
That's okay.
I know last year, the, the Health Department said that all the food, the food booths needed to have their own head washing stations, and so I've been revising it, and working on that. Add that in, and then have the, you know, their tax ID number and, and all that, so...
Great.
We should, that should be something that they know, when they get their permits, because because that's covered there, but in case it's not, I don't know why they would not. So, anything else?
No, Army Clinic's gonna sponsor us again this year. Things are going good.
Okay, thank you very much. Patty's also gonna be working on a list of different things that people can do to participate. So, for instance, the car show, they can rent a car. Or you went to Idol, they can participate with a talent. They can rent an idol, yes. Or they can have a talent, share their talents. So we're gonna try to compile a list of things that people can do to participate, so everybody kind of knows an overall feel for all of the days of what will be going on and what they can do to participate if they'd like. We need lots of help from the community, so we want to have just kind of a comprehensive list of everything they can do.
We'll have that on Facebook, and you can get on the website too.
Any questions, Dave?
This is gonna encompass a whole week again, like we did last year. Great. They gonna paint the road again?
Yep. And we're having a contest to see who can come up with the best logo for our theme, which is Join New Generations.
I like the theme.
I like the theme too.
And celebrating 90 years of UDA.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions? Don, do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't know. I heard her mention the US wanting to have everything fair and so forth that's related to political parties. I guess, I would like to see a definition of political parties that, if we get elections in the US that are nonpartisan, do we wanna have a definition that, that we do make it fair, but we, you know, decide what kind of things do we wanna have or not wanna have, you know, trade in order to, you made a question.
I think that will be another discussion item that they come back on later. So it won't be one that we do tonight.
Oh, okay. I thought that's the way it's worded tonight. I'm gonna check that.
Yeah, but...
It takes a while, it's just like what I'm there, right?
Yeah, it would be a lot easier to hear, but we're glad you could come through the phone line. Okay, anything else? Oh my gosh, you had to share. All right, anything else, anybody? Okay, thanks, Patty.
Good job, Patty, thank you.
Thanks, Patty, hard work. And please thank all your volunteers that are helping you two on your committee.
Okay, Lieutenant Burns has come in, so we're gonna have to share a report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry. Yeah.
What's new out there?
No, not much. It's relatively quiet. You know, it was February, so there's nothing. So the month of February report reflects that. It's the winter season, you know, that keeps things somewhat quiet as best we can, but probably the only thing we ended up with is the weather-related crashes that kind of will pick up. But other than that, it's been fairly quiet. Nothing on that monthly report of the calls generated, reports generated, that would jump out as unusual, or...
I did have a question on that. What's the public relations, community placing?
Well, that, that could be a community talk. There are many schools down here to go into, so...
Little seven, not many of them.
It could be a scout group. There's, I can pull those, I can go back and pull...
I was just curious for... That's what you have the most of.
Yeah, well, that's what we wanna do, is... That helps us prevent stuff from occurring. Actual calls for service were up slightly over a year, but nothing too unusual. Citations were down, 18 for the month of February. It was supposed to 29 for last February. And I'd still like to figure out how we're gonna, help and decide how much the new intersection changes things. It makes things more interesting out there. It's much calmer.
It is?
It is. It's calmer.
It's nicer to get out.
Our crashes are calmer crashes, you know, little rearenders.
Are you getting bored?
No, no, but you know, a slow day for, a slow day for us is a good day for everyone else, you know?
Except for us.
I laugh. We took the Easter Bunny to Auburn Regional Medical Center last week to deliver the bice. They go over to the pediatric unit, usually visit, and stuff like that. We make the arrangement, you know, a few weeks in advance. But you can't really regulate what the census is in the hospital, in particular, Dave. The nurse was, you know, she was real upset. She went, "There is no one in pediatrics to visit." That's actually a good thing. Well, if we have to drag the Easter Bunny back, we will. That's, we know where to find it, so...
So who is the Easter Bunny? Which one do you get, the little costume?
The Easter Bunny?
Oh, yeah, right.
What costume? What costume? What was this costume that you speak of?
All right, Don, tell us the truth.
I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna shatter the hall.
Okay, good.
So with that report in front of you, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns that...
Don, do you have anything?
I don't think, I don't have the records, so I couldn't prove that, to take it. I don't think we're going to that.
Okay. Dave?
This forced entry non-resident, is that one of the businesses across the street?
Or one of the sheds?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to think that. I think we did have one where the rock store used to be, yeah. Yeah, we had one over there.
We did have?
Yeah, I think we did have one. I think it was February. We kind of all run together, but then again, you know, storage shed season's really not here yet, so...
No, but there was one. Okay, Heidi?
Is there any chance we could get an Easter Bunny down here just for fun, for the Easter egg hunt?
Pretty good chance.
Okay.
Nine o'clock next Saturday morning?
Yep.
Yep. I'll have a little duty car swing down.
It's always fun to have someone around.
See what's going on.
Can we get a Easter Bunny?
I don't know.
Patty, bring the Easter Bunny.
You're the one that brought it up.
Thank you, that's correct, I did. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion on waste management. And today, we have Lance Peterson here, and do you want to come forward, please? Lance Allen?
Sorry.
I'll be more careful this time. So Lance is here because we have, he's submitting to us an amendment to the agreement, right? Would you want to talk to that?
That's correct, yeah, I appreciate it, Mayor Council. Put a little history behind this. So I'd had a lot of discussions with previous council member and regarding the waste collection agreement, primarily around recycling and opportunities there. And some of the dynamics had changed a little over a year ago. Weaver County taking over the processing of the single stream material recycling. And I know there's some discussion about rebates and the possibility around that, which has yet to come to pass. So with that, I was looking back and seeing some way that I could maybe help out the city and help address some of those concerns around the rebates. And in doing so, I got to looking at when the recycling is implemented, and just how the diversion rate in the city of UN has gone. And I provide you with those charts once a month, and that diversion. You can see how the diversion has increased. In fact, the most recent one I saw this morning, it appeared with me, but you're right, that's a 30% diversion. So that means 30% of your material that normally go into the waste stream is now being recycled, which is a very good number for any city in Utah, quite frankly, without a greenwich program. So I looked at that, and that equates to a reduced disposal fee for us. So I thought that it makes no sense for us to keep that savings, you know, so I wanted to put it back to the city. So I came up with this plan that, and Lee had always talked about a dollar a home he was looking at, some to get a rebate in recycling. Now, I couldn't equate the total, the reduction in the disposal fees to total dollar, but I knew that was something that he was looking for. So I went back to my people, we redid the numbers, and we were able to come up with that. And the idea was, is because of reduced disposal, reduced cost for us, and then annually, we would look at that again, and if it went down more, then we'd again equate those back on a per-time basis and the current disposal rate at the, we could have a transfer station, take that, that for the times, and share that with the city once every year, and just have that annual look back. And so every year, we'd adjust the rate back accordingly as the diversion continued to increase. So I came to, Lee had presented that with his idea, or for him to review. And I put this kind of amendment together, and it's really a rough draft to put together by no means an attorney. So kind of, I guess, to outline it and look at for something for the council to look at. And, you know, we have 20 months left in our current term of our agreement. So really, the savings, you know, with it as it sits right now is about $10,000 to the city over those remaining terms. And then there's one thing I asked, there's two-year extensions that are in the current agreement. And I just asked if we could exercise one of those extensions. And if we're doing that, I would also not have CPI adjustment on the current, this current upcoming one-year term, so... Which right now is about 2.2%, that's what the CPI is.
So now, haven't we already done an adjustment in the current contract, previous to it?
The only thing that was done was back when recycling was implemented. And that's when it knew, where the current agreement was the rightful. But there's not been anything that's been done to the current agreement that was...
On fees?
On fees or terms, other than the CPI adjustments. And so the current agreement that it sets was a five-year term with two two-year extensions. And so we've got 20 months left of that five-year initial term.
And so if we went with this agreement, it would extend it two more years?
Take it from November 2014 to November 2016. Which is already a part of the current agreement. We have those extensions in there.
We have this... Okay, so explain the extension. So if we decided not to go with this, at the end of, by 2014, you couldn't come back and say you wanna do an adjustment, right? Or could you?
Well, at that point, it's similar to what we're doing right now. It's an open negotiation with the city and us to determine if you want, if we want to go forward. You know, because both parties have the option at that point in time to go forward with the two-year extension, and that's, you know...
That would be it?
Right.
Okay, and then we would negotiate what we're doing? Just like we're doing now?
Right, we're doing now.
Okay. But if we stayed on the current one that we are on now, we keep those same prices and the same things that are in the contract?
Right, including the CPI, which is coming into effect tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And do you know what percentage that is yet?
2.2%.
So it's a 2.2% increase?
On the first cans, on the, or on the cans, yeah, on the trash.
Just the first can?
The trash and recycle. It would be on both.
Okay, but the first can, not the second can?
No, it'd be on the first and second cans.
On both, I think.
I think of the fuel surcharge, which has some... Most new contracts that are coming out now have a fuel protection component because of the cost of diesel, how it's fluctuated so much.
Right.
And so now you're seeing, in order to protect this, the haulers are putting a, what we call, fuel protection or fuel surcharge, which is, goes on the first can.
And we don't have that?
You do not have that. So this was negotiated, we got, we had with the... Really, it's about 2008 when the, when we, that year that we suffered the bad fuel. So beginning in 2000, late 2009, 2010, everybody started putting those in. And you probably saw on some of your other deals you did.
Yes. Okay, do you have any questions, Dave?
I don't know, you asked, I'll answer.
And Don, do you have any questions?
I don't have the material in front of me, so I, I not... I have to go a couple of, knowing, not that that's wrong, but I'm sure that's, that we, that we... But now, 2014, the price of, the point we reduced, but 2014?
So if we take this amendment, it would reduce, it would save the city $10,000 over the next 20 months. And you would not exercise the 2.2 CPI?
At that, what time?
July.
But it would extend?
July, what options could we have for the, for the, that that was asked?
Is it just for one year?
Yeah, the one year. Then the following year would be whatever the CPI is going to be.
The CPI is just one year. So Lance, would the lower rates stay in effect until 2016?
Yes, other than the exception of the CPI. If the CPI changes, which wouldn't happen until 2000, July 1 of 2014.
Repeat that.
These prices would stay in effect for the remainder of our contract, except for the CPI would go up the second year.
And you could, if the lookback on the tonnage goes, you know, if it goes down, then the rates will go down, so they'd be...
If the tonnage goes down, the rates will go down.
Okay, so, July, you must foretell the CPI for this July, July 2013, but then it would go up, CPI 2013?
Correct.
Yes, the CPI.
This says, it would, right?
In 2014.
If we don't accept this, then it does go up July 2013?
Correct.
Did you understand it that way?
Don, did you understand, if we don't accept this, it does go up in July? If you don't accept it, it is going up in July, 2.2%? Yes.
2.2%.
Okay, so the 10,000 figured on the extension to 2016?
Yeah, well, I just figured, no, I just figured the 20 months that's remaining in the existing contract, it doesn't count in the extension.
From now until November 2014?
So if you pull that, it would be far greater than 10,000.
So it would be more than the 10,000?
Yeah, yeah. It'd be probably closer to 20,000.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do we have to make a decision today?
Do you want a decision today? When do we need to make a decision?
The sooner you make the decision, the sooner the rates go into effect, yes.
Okay, so we do have to make a decision today? So it is on to be voted on tomorrow?
So, so with this on the agenda, because we were trying to negotiate a better price, Lee was working with you to negotiate a better price, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, you know, we came to be, this, and I, you know, I wasn't... It doesn't matter if you voted on, you know, it's something to enter into discussion with the council, you know, and this is, and so I'm not sure what happened in the transition, but yeah, it came before the council. If you wanna vote on it, fine, if you, if you need to.
Well, he had set it up so that it could be voted on.
Okay.
Well, one way, so we knew what we're doing, so... Does anybody mind delaying vote, Dave?
How far back could we move it to the next meeting?
Don, do you want to delay it to the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I think that would be good.
You want to?
I would also like to delay.
Okay, so we will put this on the next meeting.
I just wonder if we're gonna put this out to bid to other companies? If we're not going to?
We can't until the contract's up. So if we, if we go with this, we could put it out to bid to 2016? Okay?
Right. Well, okay.
Okay. So we will re-put it back on the agenda for next time.
And that's it? You know, this one I've bid it before, and since then, the prices have been adjusted just for CPI?
And what do you mean by that? We put it out, we...
We put up the bid, and we rewarded the contract, and then the only time that we raised the rates has been when the, for the CPI.
Okay.
I kind of, sorry. I kind of changed my mind, because, well, I mean, I don't see why waiting a month will change anything, because we're either sort of voting if we're going to...
Accept the extension.
Accept the extension, or if we're going to let our contract expire and put it out to bid to other companies.
Right, and it won't expire for two more years.
Right, so we can either vote on that tonight, or we can just delay it, but either way, it's gonna be the same vote.
Right, it's not gonna change anything either way.
Right.
It's just extending, putting it out to bid by...
Yeah.
What was I doing?
It's just extending, putting it out to bid until the end of the next month. But you can save ten thousand dollars in the meantime. Or, yeah. Don, do you wanna go ahead?
I'll go ahead.
How about Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, I need a vote. I need a motion, sorry. Does anyone do a motion?
I will do a motion, that we accept the amendment to the agreement for the residential solid waste and recycling services agreement from Waste Management Corporation.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes, and I need a roll call, Dave?
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
Heidi?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda. Thanks, thanks, Lance, we appreciate it. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is other business. Do you have anything, Heidi?
Just thank you to the people who donated for Easter, and, no, and we changed the time, I've already discussed everything I have, so I don't really...
Okay, the only thing I have is to thank all those, thank all those that are working on UDA, I really appreciate that, and the Easter donations too, and do you have anything, Don?
Oh, just, okay, I'll play, move the, sign off for nine o'clock, for nine oh one, it'll be over. Did she want to help Friday with that?
Sure.
What time?
Don, Dave says four AM, is that okay?
What time?
Four AM.
Oh, oh, yeah, we got it.
I imagine we'll be over there at seven thirty. Thank you.
Anything else, Don? Okay, Dave?
Just to reiterate what everybody said, thank you to all the workers that are doing for you days, and for those that support the city and help out any way they can, it's just really appreciated. That's all I got.
Okay, next on the agenda is the public comment period, this is a period where you can make comments, it's not a question to ask, we're, it's two minutes, if you want to talk with us after, we're more willing to talk with you, so we'll open it up, and when you come up, just give your name.
I've got some. Scott Frederick Kendall, I used to do the contract for Waste Management, so I think you guys made a big snafu by not negotiating with Mr. Allen. You had the chance to renegotiate and...
They did.
See, I mean...
They did, they accepted it.
No, you did, you had another comment, you had a chance to do, have recycling, he said that, I talked to him before the meeting, that will lower our rates substantially to almost four dollars per can, just by getting recycling costs. Now, I mentioned a few, few months ago, see, Lee merged the recycling fees into the total contract of picking up waste...
Are you saying going each one individual?
Going with waste only, without doing recycling. You guys could save some people money, some people don't like to recycle, and he said about four dollars per can we could have saved by not having recycling, so you guys just voted without public comment to extend the contract for those people that don't wanna recycle, and, you know, they have their freedom to go choose another carrier, but, you know, if you guys would, I mentioned it to Lee, the last time I was at council meeting, you know, if you get people to give a public comment before the meeting, then we could bring some of this kind of thing up, not after the fact, after it's over with, so... That's why I say just give people a chance to speak, we're helping you guys out, that's what it's here for. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, I make my motion, we close the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.